All right, we are officially into our regular meeting. I will call us to order on this beautiful day, November 6th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in Lafayette, Georgia, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia. Welcome. I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Teim?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Thank you. A quorum has been determined. Now we'll move on to approving this agenda. May I have a motion from the board to amend or to approve this agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart, thank you. Any discussion about the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the motion is passed to approve this agenda. Thank you. Next, we need to look at the minutes from the last meeting, October 2nd. Do I have a motion from the board to amend or approve those minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Second?
State.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. Any discussion about those minutes? All right, all in favor to approve the minutes as they are written, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, those are also approved. Thank you. All right, I will do my comments. I've got, they're just short and sweet tonight. I am pleased to share a few updates and highlights since last month. October was an extremely challenging month, so I'll keep this short and just hit some highlights. We had another cost savings that we found in the main office. Our recent audit of employee headcount and verification in the new payroll system has resulted in a cost savings of $12,000 a year. That's $1,000 a month less that we have to pay because we had done the audit and got rid of some names that shouldn't have been on the list. So, a lot of those were poll workers, so we didn't need to have them as full-time employees. So, we cleared that up. Thanks to everyone that contributed to that, because that took some time. Upcoming holidays, county offices will be closed on Veterans Day next Tuesday, and then for Thanksgiving on Thursday and Friday. I want to extend my appreciation to the staff who work on the holidays, such as the police, 911, the fire department, and other emergency personnel. And I would also like to especially thank the landfill for working next Tuesday on Veterans Day, when the rest of us will be off work that day. So, thank y'all. Your dedication does not go unnoticed. I'd like to say thank you to our veterans and their families. This is a dear spot for me. Next year, now that SPOLOST has passed, we will be able to build the Military Memorial that I've been talking about for over a year now. That money will be within the SPOLOST budget or the funds, so I'm excited about that. It will be at the Civic Center in Rock Springs. That's about all I know about it right now. So, more to come about that as we start developing that strategy. Community event, Tire Amnesty Day. I'm sorry if I'm sealing this thunder from one of the board members who is going to talk about it. We can talk about it again, too. November 8th, Saturday this week, the Tire Amnesty Day. This event helps keep our community clean and environmentally responsible, and I'm grateful to the team for organizing and supporting that each year. And again, thanks to the landfill staff for working on that busy day on Saturday. And then lastly, SPOLOST update. We're all well aware that it passed on Tuesday night, which is a tremendous benefit to Walker County and the cities. This positive outcome ensures that funding will be available for vital infrastructure and community projects. It also now lets me move forward with some long-term planning that I've been holding up on, really getting into that because I wasn't sure about the funds that we would need for long-term planning. So, that's a very good thing. And lastly, really lastly, I am available for meetings or phone calls at any time. So, come visit me, call us. If I'm not there, my staff is very well-trained, and they can probably answer pretty much anything you have to ask. Otherwise, I'm available to you. So, with that, I will move to the next thing. It's our financial report, which will be a little different today. Christian Roach, our CFO, will give us some other information about SPOLOST, too. So, thank you.
Sounds good. So, today I do not have September financials, just because they're being audited. The auditors were here this week, and they left today. They said we had a very productive week, so I feel really good about this audit. I pulled some data just over the entire 2020 SPOLOST cycle. So, we've been about five years of collections. We have collected $26.9 million, just as the county's portion, not the entire balance. And then we've had $22.2 million in expense. We, I project that SPOLOST revenue at the end of the cycle will be $33.2 million, which is five more than we estimated when we did the referendum for this 2020 SPOLOST. So, that's great. That's a lot more funds that we can use for all kinds of projects around the county that were in that referendum. As you can see, I also did a graph of per year how much revenue we've got from the SPOLOST. In 2021, it was $4.4 million that we received, and it has increased over the last five years to be about 40% more, which is fantastic, at $6.2 million a year that we've collected. So, the SPOLOST is doing really well, and I'm excited for the direction it's heading. The growth is great.
I'll add one thing to what you're saying. I think we, in our office, we determined that it would take three meals. If the SPOLOST didn't pass, we would have to raise property taxes by three meals. So, that's a lot. So, this is saving us a great deal. So, yeah, protecting us against higher taxes. What else you got?
That's it.
Okay.
Y'all have any questions for me?
No, thank you for your.
I've got a question. Is there any way, because I know there's been some discussion, to tell how much, and there's people that do these numbers a lot better than I do, but, or you can talk to somebody to figure out how much that one penny, how much comes from outside the county? That's been inside the county from like tourism? Is there any way to figure out?
No, a lot of that information is kind of proprietary at the state.
From the state level?
The companies will pay it in, and then there's, the state won't really release any of that information. I can tell you that there's some, there's been a lot more activity from out of state. Macklemore gave me some numbers that they have had visitors from all 50 states and 41 countries. So, we are getting a lot of people in our county that we weren't before. So, it is, it is a good bit of money is coming from outside the county.
Right.
Good question.
Thank you.
Maybe we can do a little bit more deeper dives.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you're getting online sales, too. I mean, that comes from the state.
Yep.
When that comes back to us, but there's a lot more of that, too.
Yep.
But, I mean, that one cent generates a lot of money.
Uh huh.
And then I would say a lot of, somebody threw out a number of 30%, possibly could be, 30% of that one cent per year could be coming from outside of the tourism.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably close. Yeah, I would think so. But, anyway, I was just wondering if there's any way to find out.
We'll continue to look for ways to deeper dive now that, now that the whole new financial team is in place.
Right.
Yeah. Thanks, Christian.
Yeah, of course.
All right, we'll move to department reports. Let's see, is Payne here? Do Payne, nope. Okay. He was going to comment on the litter task force. I can report this much, that they still do meet once a month in my office, and they'd met last Monday night. And so, that task force is still in force, and I see the difference. I hope y'all are seeing the difference, too. I think our, our communities are cleaning up. I think that they're making a big difference, and we talk about it a lot. And I think that's also making people realize, hey, I don't need to be throwing my garbage out the window in somebody else's yard or whatever. So, we'll keep talking about it, and thanks to Payne and his task force. All right, then the next section is department reports. And again, this is something that I'll report on. These two listed items are relating to the Superior Court judges. So, the legislature passed a new compensation bill that brings all Superior Court judges' salaries across Georgia in line with the national average, and based upon the same pay that federal district court judges currently receive. Every county was doing it differently, every judge was being paid differently, and some were getting supplements, ours were getting supplements, and then some counties weren't paying supplements. So, the state finally decided they needed to fix that. So, what happens to the supplement now? So, up until now, the supplements were in addition to the salary. Now that the salary is being raised and put into more of a proportionate amount, there is $16,000 of supplement that the judges have asked this board to consider passing on to their staff. They have four administrative staff, and they have two court clerks. I'm saying that wrong, but it's a clerk's, law clerk, sorry, thank you. So, our portion, there's four counties, and our portion, Walker County's portion of those supplements that we've been paying for years and years and years is $16,000. So, it's not a lot of money. But, the judges are asking, the four judges are asking if this board will think about allowing that $16,000 to be spread across the administration staff, administrative staff. So, that's what's before you today. So, this has not changed the budget. It simply redirects the budgeted dollars to different salaries. So, we are recognizing the new compensation arrangement from the state and asking that the budget dollars be reappointed to the administration staff. So, I'm making the motion on behalf of the judges to reappoint that $16,000 equally among the staff that they have in their office. So, that's my motion to approve this request. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And then what discussion would you like to have? Any discussion, any questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, so passed. Thank you. The judges, thank you, too. The next thing is a presentation from the Chattanooga Area Food Bank. Mr. John Carr Whitmer is here. He's the Director of Philanthropy, hello. Let me start over. He's the Director of Philanthropy. So, please come forward to the podium and address the board. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's an honor. Chairman Teim's, Commissioner Blakemore, Commissioner Askew, Lisa. Alex, I'm not going to try and pronounce that last name. Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Wilson, Christian and.
Katia?
Thank you for letting me be here to present. I don't think the Chattanooga, and by the way, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, too. I don't think there's ever been a presentation done by the Chattanooga Food Bank to the Board of Commissioners here, or the Northwest Georgia branch of the Chattanooga Food Bank. So, we're going to dive into this, to learn a little bit more about us and what's going on in the whole world of SNAP and funding and all that great stuff. So, I have packets for you, and I'm going hard copy tonight, not visual. So, if you'll turn over to this first page, and then flip it. And real quick, our core beliefs. No one should go hungry. Food is a basic human right, and people are worthy of dignity, compassion, and respect. You cannot believe the folks that are coming into our warehouses now, asking for help. They're scared, they're crying. I mean, there's just, it's a lot, and everybody gets dealt with compassion and respect, period. Equitable access to food strengthens the community and fosters hope. When people ask me what I do, to keep it short, so I don't get in a whole exposition on what the food bank does, we feed people and we give hope, bottom line. And the next page, you're going to see our geographical footprint. We serve 11 counties in Southeast Tennessee, nine counties in Northwest Georgia. You'll see that we have three distributions. The main, the mothership, the main warehouse up in Chattanooga, and we have a food pantry that we sponsor up there called Foxwood. And we, in Dalton, we have a warehouse and offices, that's where I'm out of, and we serve the nine counties in Northwest Georgia. By the way, I live in Calhoun, Gordon County, so I am part of Northwest Georgia. I'm not a transplant. How we work? We source food from retailers, manufacturers, farmers, producers, government nutrition programs. There's a big bucket where the food comes from, food drives. People just manufacture saying, hey, man, we're going to donate this entire trailer truck, load of food. And it all comes together, our staff and volunteers, and without volunteers, we can't do what we do. Packs the food, gets it out to the distribution centers, and it goes out to our hunger relief partners, or our mobile food pantries, or Foxwood. All right, next page, hunger relief partners and programs. Last year, we had over 21 million pounds of food, fiscal '25 distributed through our three locations. That's a lot of food.
Lot of food.
And how do we distribute it? Faith-based food pantries, we call these hunger relief partners, they know where the needs are in every county, every community. They source the food from us, they get it out to the communities. That is about 68% of our volume is through hunger relief partners. Mobile pantries, home delivery programs, school and college campus pantries, sack packs for the kids where they get it on a Friday after school, and supposedly gives them enough food to get through the weekend. We're finding out that the food's gone by the time they get home, they're so hungry. Soup kitchens, shelters, and senior centers, that's the other 30% of distribution that we do. Okay? Let's see here. I'm used to a PowerPoint, so bear with me, folks. All right. Facts and figures. 20 counties, it's estimated 190,000 people are facing hunger and food insecurity. And of those 20 counties, 47,000 children are facing hunger. On both of these estimates, that's 1 in 6 people, and it's consistent through all 20 counties. One in 6 people are facing food insecurity or hunger. We provided 17.7 million meals last year, 20.3 million pounds of food distributed in total, 5.7 million pounds of fresh produce. Because the old way of doing things and getting out whatever you got is, they worry about nutrition. Those days are gone. We are working hard to make sure that the food is nutritious food for healthy reasons. Over 23,000 sack packs were done, and what we have now, two, three years ago, this didn't exist, it's called Retail Rescue. A good example, you got the Costco's, you got the Walmart, you got the Food Cities, you got the Krogers, whatever. They have food that is a Best Buy, Best Buy should be basically, and expired. The expired date is when the food, uh-uh, okay? You take Publix, they take their baked goods out for one day, and they pull it back what's not been sold. That is rescued. It goes directly to our hunger relief partners or to Foxwood. It's fresh baked goods, so why throw it out? And we rescued a lot, 6 point million pounds of food were rescued last year. And that's become another source of food for the food bank, honestly. All right, next, Chattanooga Food Bank. Of all 20 counties, fiscal '25, you can see the numbers there, I'm not going to drill down on this too much. Over 20 million pounds of food, almost 17 million meals provided, 5.9 million pounds of fresh produce distributed, and milk to my plate, 80,000 gallons of fresh milk distributed. Now, coming into the nine counties in Northwest Georgia, 8 million total pounds of food distributed in Northwest Georgia, 6.6 million meals provided, and 2.2 million pounds of fresh produce coming into your county and the rest of the counties we serve down here, the nine counties down here. And for Walker County, fiscal '25, which ended in June 30th of this year, we had a total of 1,388,000 total pounds distributed into your county. 1.5, or 1 point, I'll say 1,156,000 meals were provided, and 350,000 pounds of that was fresh produce. That's right here. Flip the page again, and this is a snapshot of Walker County. Again, with census numbers, you're always running statistically a year and a year and a half to two years behind. So, this is a little outdated, but it's the current information that we have. Total population of Walker County, you see it, 68,000 plus. Food insecurity rate, what that means is somebody does not get enough nutritious food for three meals a day, okay? Food insecurity rate, 16.3. Total food insecure people, 11,000. Now, here's where it gets really a little scary. 14,648 children facing food insecurity, 8.2% insecurity rate, food insecurity rate. 2,660 children don't have food in their tummies when they come to school. You can see here how we distribute. We have a listing of our programs and our partners right there, who are active and supporting and sourcing from us and getting the food out to your communities. And you can see total pounds by fiscal year has been growing year by year, and it's really growing now, not in just Walker, all over, because we'll talk about that in a minute. And you can see distribution, whether it's by a partner or an internal program like a mobile food drop. Thank you. All right. Meal map conversions, next page. How do we come up with these numbers? $2 provides five meals, and this is based on USDA numbers. In other words, you can, we love food drives, it's part of our culture. We'll do a food drive anytime, but you go out and buy a jar of peanut butter for three or four bucks, that's it. You give us $2, and you provide enough groceries for five meals. Because of what we can do with all our donations, all our sourcing, all the programs we're involved with, we can make this work. 1.2 pounds defines a meal, according to Feeding America, and one hour of volunteering is equivalent to 40 meals. So, if you're thinking, how can I help? An hour volunteering, 40 meals. You give me two bucks, you gave me five meals. It's not hard to get involved, and we're going to need you, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. And then on the back, it's just a thank you. Again, it's an honor to be before all you today, and please note that nutritious food is medicine, and medicine's about healthy food. We're seeing a converging of the health industry and the major food banks coming together because we're all really doing, trying to do the same thing. Okay? All right, the next, this is the Community Impact Report '25. I don't have the '25 out yet, but I want to show you something on the very last page. If you'll go to that page, it says financials.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Where is this paperwork that you're showing right now?
In terms of what?
Is it by the back door?
I don't have extra copies to give, but I can get you some.
Okay.
Yeah, that's available.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, it's a good question. Financials. Take a look at one note here. More than 94% of every dollar donated goes to food distribution. We are really, really proud of this fact, and we can boast about it because there's not a lot of organizations can make that claim. We have a CFO who is really a magic man with money. Believe me, he's good. All right, there's those two. Now, let's get into this one here, it says two of our amazing donors. We had a full staff meeting last Thursday. We are in emergency crisis response mode. As you know, what's happened to SNAP and the federal government. In fact, here's The Perfect Storm. You remember that movie, The Perfect Storm? Here we go. We got the SNAP gone. It's really affecting a lot of people, a lot of people, and they're scared. Inflation, well, they say it's coming down. Food has gone up 2.7% on top of what it's already been doing. ALIS, which is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, not unemployed, employed. We used to call this middle class. They're coming to us now because they're choosing before, they're choosing, like, do I pay my rent or my mortgage, my healthcare, my childcare, my food? And they're, they can't make ends meet. And so, we have this group of individuals coming to us now looking for help. We have the holiday season demand, which is, this is the biggest push of the year for the food bank, with the holidays and the food and the need and everything else. We are, believe it or not, the food insecurity rate is 70% above pandemic levels, and that's from Feeding Georgia. We are in the carpet capital industry of the world, especially in Dalton, and of course, I'm sure many of you are aware that they're downsizing or restructuring. Mannington Mills made the announcement that they're getting out of the residential carpet business completely. They're shutting down mills in Chesworth, in Dalton, in Gordon County. They laid off 1,000 employees across the country. Of course, Mohawk and Shaw's been restructuring, and that leaves engineered floors. Those are the big four. And everybody's feeling the punch. So, what happens is when they do this, guess who's out of a job and guess who's looking for food? Okay? We have a crush coming at us like we've never had before. And having said that, let me read this document that I gave you. As a Director of Philanthropy, that means, that's a fancy word for saying I do, I work with donor relationships and donor revenue. As a Director of Philanthropy for Northwest Georgia, I wanted to make sure that you receive the most recent letter from the CAFB's President, CEO, Melissa Blessin, Blessin, Clemons. If you not already see this letter, if you've already received it, disregard. If you have not, please take a moment to read below, and we're going to do that. And there's her email, if you have any questions, directly to her. Beginning November 4th, and we're evaluating this, not to be permanent, but to get through the crisis, we've already added shifts to the Dalton warehouse, the Foxwood facility, and the main warehouse. We've increased our hours, we've increased availability for volunteers to come in. Down in Dalton, where I'm out of, we are bringing in armies of volunteers, and we're putting together emergency food boxes. We got Assembly Alliance going, but we can't do it without volunteers. So, what we're doing here is we've already spent another, shouldn't I say, we sort, whatever, at least a million and a half more money recently. We go after it because we're not going to make this a political issue. What we're going to do is do what we've always done, let's get the food to the people that are in need, period. And we're going to continue to do what we always done, and we'll find ways to do it. That's why we're rethinking everything here. So, let me read this letter to you from Melissa. Dear friend, in the two weeks since my last letter, I've been inundated with one question. How can I help? Right now, our food bank and community partners are seeing a surge in needs as families and seniors brace for the loss of food assistance programs and benefits. More than 120,000 of our neighbors, many of them children, rely on SNAP for access to nutritious food. If the government reopens this week, the ripple effects of the shutdown will strain families in the charitable food network through the holidays and beyond. We're guessing at the end of first quarter '26, it'll stabilize again. This is a crisis, and we have activated our emergency response plan. We are sourcing additional food, expanding staff and volunteer shifts, providing additional support to our community partners, extending pantry and mobile distribution hours. And how, here's how you can help. You can give, you've seen what $2 does. You can volunteer, you've seen what one hour volunteering can do, and you can use your voice and be an advocate out there. The Chattanooga Food Bank has always risen to meet the moments of crisis from tornadoes or pandemics, and we'll continue to do this with one heart, resilience, and excellence. And you'll see that there, the website links from the Chattanooga Food Bank, where you can find food if you need it, you can volunteer if you want, and you can donate if you want. You click on these links, it's all right there on the main food bank website, okay? And I need to tell you that wrapping up here, because I know you guys are running hard here, 38, depends on the month, 38% of this volume of food that we distribute, 38% comes into Northwest Georgia. We're not this thing in Chattanooga, and we just kind of, well, we're down there. 38% of the food that we distribute comes down to Northwest Georgia. We're here to stay, we're here to help, we want to help. But, the irony is only 10% of donor revenue comes out of Northwest Georgia. We've never made a big deal about that, and we won't make a big deal out of that, but I need you to know, because we are, we're not taking, we're giving, and that's what we do. And I want you to understand that. Now, if you give a donation, fantastic. I'm not here to beat you on that one. I'm just letting you know that we are committed to Northwest Georgia, no matter what, period. Okay? All right? And then there's a, the spec sheet that was in the PowerPoint, those are in your packet, which, if you want to show those or talk about them in other conversations and things. If you need digital versions, let me know. And last but not least, Share Your Christmas, it's our annual, we've been doing it for 52 years. It's the biggest food raiser, fundraiser event of the year for the food bank. It's going to be covered by Local 3, like it has been for many, many years, and you can see what's most needed. If you want to do a food drive, you can go to the website that I showed you, and you can sign up and do a food drive. And by the way, any food that's donated here will stay here in Walker County, okay? It's not going to be carted out to Dalton or Chattanooga or whatever. It'll stay in the community. And with that, that was a lot. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate it.
Very good information.
Thank you.
I think you opened up a lot of eyeballs, so we're, we're here to help you too.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here tonight.
And by the way, happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, and just happy holidays to everybody, okay?
We'll put, we'll put this information on our website.
Okay.
So people can find it easily.
All righty.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, um, let's see, we are moving on to the public hearing, planning and zoning portion of our meeting. Is, first of all, is there anyone here to speak for or against either one of these two property issues? I'm just trying to set up my, my next step. So if there's no one here to speak, then we'll move on to, is Mr. Lloyd here or Mr. Guthrie here?
Mr. Guthrie.
Okay, Mr. Lloyd's first, okay, you make the approach, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You are Joseph Love?
I'm Joe Lloyd, yep, that's right.
Okay.
And I'll introduce myself, I'm
Yeah.
the father of three children in Walker County schools and daycares. I, my wife and I graduated from Covenant College, and my wife works at Covenant College still as their marketing and communications director, and I am a small business owner in Walker County and employ 11 people in Walker County in Rossville area. I, oh, I live on Durham Road, my address is 55 Durham Road. I am asking for a variance, a setback variance at a property that's also on Durham Road, it's just about a mile down from where I live. So I'm just gonna, you should have a packet with three pages in it, a letter, and then two diagrams, so hopefully you've got that. And I'm gonna read this letter to you as an explanation. Thank you for your consideration. I'm proposing to build an agricultural pole barn on a property located at 957 Durham Road for just personal equipment storage, agricultural equipment storage. The building and property is not served by power or water, and will be for agriculture equipment storage only with open sides. As you can see from the attached diagram and photos, the property is mostly on a hill, and there are not a lot of options for the placement of a barn or shed, which will allow for a pole end to load and unload and not be in the road itself. I'd like to place the barn 42 feet from the center line of the county road inside the 60-foot county road setback. Durham Road, for those of you who don't know, is in the far northwest corner of the county, and this property itself is less than a mile from the Dade County line. It's strictly residential and local agricultural traffic. I also live on the road a little further east. This building is, will and is still set back from the roadside and is separated by a buffer of trees beyond and past the moat right of way. The building will not affect traffic or the neighborhood in any way, and no additional tree clearing or excavation will be needed. It's a 24 by 48 pole barn with a metal roof. It will not have power or water, just for tractor and attachment storage. And the property is only used for timber management, gardening, hay, hopefully a small chicken and goat pen in the future, and occasionally I hunt on it when I can get some time. That's it. Does anybody have any questions about that immediately?
So the way it works is we, we listen to
Okay.
you guys, and then later in the meeting, they actually vote.
Okay.
So.
The only other thing I'll point out is the first diagram, which says pole barn location, has a picture, a satellite picture of the property. The red line accurately represents the property line. I've had that line surveyed, which is very, very different from the tax parcel map. It's probably 50 feet or more different, and it, and it takes away the flat area, unfortunately. So you can see the diagram in the yellow, little yellow box, which is roughly where that pole barn would be. And then that area in blue is just the, just showing how much of the property is a hill. The last page is just pictures of the site. This is what it looks like right now, and the trees, you can kind of see the picture that has the road in it, the trees that are in there, which separate the road from the pole barn location will stay there, it's behind those trees. Just wanted to give kind of a reference point for what that is.
Any questions from the board?
No ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
The only, I had one other small thing.
Sure.
When I was, so two days ago, or maybe yesterday, I got an email, and I forwarded it to the planning office, but it was a scam email asking for an additional fee for like when you come in to propose for a setback grant. And I, I get a lot of scam emails, but this one was insanely good. And I have brought a copy of it in case any of you want to see it.
I do.
It had the logo all over it and everything, and somehow they had my personal address and the email address somehow, and I don't know how they got that. I know there's a lot of information that's listed when you apply for a variance, but it was just really, it was crazy to me, and so I brought a copy of it.
Yeah, you can bring it to me, thank you. It's kind of scary, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's wild.
Well, glad you identified it as scam.
That's the email, and then they attached a whole invoice with, they asked for $5,000 to be wire transferred, to be able to, to be processed.
Oh my.
Approved. So I called the office before I sent them the money.
Good for you. We've actually had scams come into the county government in my office, and we always, like, has anybody ever seen this before? And then we call, and the, just rings and rings and rings, and we know it's, it's happened a bunch.
Yeah, hopefully somebody wouldn't fall for something like that, because it looked very official.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I'm probably gonna give it to the sheriff's office
Yeah.
at the end, okay.
Or the IT department or something.
I spoke with the Sheriff's Department IT and Bill Leguie, we changed all of our documentation to a scammer's notice on what we hand out now.
Okay, great, okay.
Thank you. I mean, the addressing and names, the wrong ad by name, but the address was here. Someone apparently, because the public notice gets put out two weeks prior to the meeting, so someone lucky got it out in the newspaper or whatnot.
Wow.
So our new documentation had this scammer notice on the bottom, did not pay to disregard or contact our actor.
Okay, good. Already handled, okay, great.
Yeah, I didn't know, that's great.
Mm, that is good.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Guthrie, you are welcome to come up now. How are you today? So you are, are you Joseph, I'm sorry, Thomas Guthrie?
I'm Thomas.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome. I'm Thomas Guthrie, and I'm the executor of my parents' estate located at 317 West Cove Road. It's a, right now it's a 158-acre farm that we were planning to sell. My grand, my mother, before she passed away, requested that the house go to my sister. Unfortunately, that wasn't in the will, and we've been, it's been contested in probate court. And we were required to list the house for sale along with the rest of the property. But what we want to do is separate the house, just, and not, not with the five acres, but with just two acres, just enough to take in the property around the house. So we presented this to the Planning Commission on the 16th of October, and it was approved. And we're just asking to continue that.
Okay. And how many acres are there, Mr. Guthrie?
Approximately 158 on two sides of the road.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing, it says property has a total of 61-plus acres.
That's the side, that's all that's on the east side of West Cove Road. There's approximately 100 acres on the west side.
Okay, so, wonder, John, why, do you know why it says 61 acres instead of the whole 100 acres? Maybe I'm missing something.
That's the, that's the parcel that it sits on, total deck side of the road, it sits, the house is on that side.
Oh, I got you, I'm sorry, okay, I get you.
Several different parcels to make up.
I got you, okay, I'm with you now. Thank you for that. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Guthrie? Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you. And you?
I do have questions, is there a reason they wouldn't give them five acres with the house?
Is there?
Yeah, why are you just trying to separate that for 61? I don't know.
My sister wants to, is gonna have to bid on the house if she wants it. But she doesn't need five acres, and that's just extra expense to her, really.
Okay.
Do you, well, I forgot what I was gonna ask, sorry. You, you made me think of something, but I forgot what it was already. So there's, there's someone behind you.
I just told him about that. He, he asked me to tell you about the court order, and I think I did, but in probate court, they, they ordered that the house be so, be listed, and if my sister wanted it, she will have to bid on it.
Okay.
So she may win it, she may not, but like I say, she doesn't need three extra acres, and it's all wooded anyway.
Okay. All right, anything else, anybody? All right, thank you, you heard me say earlier that we vote on it later in the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now to unfinished business. Is someone saying something out there that needs to be addressed? All right, unfinished business. Ordinance zero, I'm sorry, O dash 03 dash 24, to amend Chapter 4 of our, of the Code of Walker County to provide for spay and neutering and licensing requirements for cats and dogs. This has been tabled multiple times, and I'm unfortunately gonna have to table it once more because we still have some questions from the board that we want to make sure that we have covered thoroughly before we bring this complete document to the public and to the board for final vote. So it's been suggested, and I agree, so I'm gonna make the motion to table this until May of 2026. That's gonna give our voucher program a whole year to, to, to be in operation. So we're tweaking that, that voucher program a little bit as we go, we're learning more every month. Bailey Clements reported last month on the result of that so far, and we'll keep reporting that every once in a while. But we're gonna hold this, or I'm making the motion that the board table this until May, the May meeting, to give us time again, like I say, to make sure the wording is where we want it, and the voucher program has gotten itself worked out like it's supposed to. So that's my motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion from the board? If they want to say anything, okay. So all in favor of tabling this to the May meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, so moved, thank you. Now we're moving into the public comment section of the night, so this is where anyone can come to the podium and address the board. I remind you that if you have questions or you want to direct something to one of the, one of the commissioners, you come through me as the chair, and then I will ask the board to respond if they want to. It's, we don't, we don't have to respond, but we like to when we can, but there may be something that we don't have the answer to. So who would like to come first, and, sure, come on. When you come up, tell us your name and what area you live in.
I need to take my hat off out of respect. You want me to remove my hat?
That, that's
It's not pretty, but I will.
That's all right.
Put it back on, please, Mr. Jack.
Thank you, Mark. Yes.
Who, who, what's your name?
I'm Jack Goodlett, I live at 469 Straight Gut Road for 44 years, as a matter of fact. And this is my neighbor here, tell them who you are.
Yeah, I'm Ken Norman, I live across the road on Straight Gut.
Welcome.
And my cousin, Trip Goodlett, couldn't be here, he lives at 331. John McCarthy, I don't know what, he lives right across the street as well. But our concern is the speed limit on Straight Gut Road, and I spoke to you about it at a Kiwanis meeting when I first met you. But the, when you, and I talked to Mark Askew today.
Yes.
And he could have handled it, but I just wanted y'all to know when he talks about it, you know, that it is a legitimate concern. But the, when you start down Straight Gut Road on the north end, I'm gonna call it the north end at Rock Springs, there's a speed limit sign, 45 miles an hour, and 45 is too fast to make the curve at the, at the creek. My cousins had several cars in the creek in his yard that had flipped. Then you top the hill, and you turn left, and it veers to the left a little bit, but 45 miles an hour is just too fast. Then as you go past my house and Ken's house, you top the hill, and then Goodson Circle comes in. And it's just amazing that someone hadn't been killed there, because they passed my house headed toward the prison south at 55 to 75 miles an hour, I swear they're flying. And when they top that hill, if somebody's pulling out from Goodson and gonna turn north, it's just a, a miracle that it hadn't already happened. The next thing is when you get up the hill, and the Goodlett Farm's still on the left, my daughter lives on the left there, and there's turns, there's, I don't, is anybody, have y'all driven Straight Gut Road? I know you have.
Like an S curve.
Okay, yeah. And it says 35 miles an hour. Well, I drove it yesterday in the dry, and 35, you've got to be a good driver to make that curve at the top. If somebody's coming north, it's just too fast. And I can't believe that whoever did the evaluation and put, you know, slow down to 35. It, it's just too fast. That, my other point is when you're coming north on Straight Gut Road, as you approach Guy Williams Road, about maybe a quarter of a mile before you get there, there's a speed limit sign of 35. And there's not another speed limit sign on the north side. So people are, if they adhere to the law, they're going 35 north, and the ones coming south are 45. But I had talked to the previous commissioner, and he assured me that he was gonna get an evaluation that was done from Atlanta or whatever, DOT, and it never happened, several times I asked him. But I talked to Sheriff Wilson, and Walker County cannot patrol radar, cannot do radar on Straight Gut Road. And there's a reason, I can't tell you what it is, but the state can. And I don't know if you guys can ask the state to patrol that road better, or address the speed limit signs, or do an evaluation, and, and Sheriff Wilson said that's kind of an expensive ordeal to get them to come up and drive the road and say, I won't charge you a thing, I already tell you it's too fast. But, but anyway, that's why we're here. Did you want to say something?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Well, yeah, I don't mind.
I, I'm Ken Norman. I moved there, I think, around '90 or '91, and right near the railroad tracks on the, what we call the north end. Soon as you cross the railroad tracks heading south, not more than maybe a tenth of a mile or less, there was a 35 mile an hour sign for 30 years or close to it. And somebody hit it one day and knocked it down, and I noticed it was down. And about a month later, a new sign went up, and it was 45. And I went and went to the road commissioner, I called Atlanta, I've done everything I can do, but they all said that it was, one guy from Atlanta said that it was really always supposed to be that way, that the mistake was made 30 years ago that's a 35. But I, I implore any of you here, if you would just start at the railroad tracks, get your car up to 45 miles an hour and try to negotiate that bridge, the curve, the hills. And like he said, like Jack said, 90% of the time when the people are coming north and do all that, they come around the bridge on the wrong side of the road. I always just hugged the white line myself, but it used to be 35, and somehow, a, a friend of mine that worked on the Catoosa County Road Department, they told me that more than likely, whoever was out doing the signs that day at Walker County didn't have a 35, and they just said, hey, throw 45 and we'll go. So, you know, they got back to eat pizza at the Pizza Hut, I reckon, but it, it's too fast. If, and there's not even, there's not, there's hidden driveways, there's kids at play.
Yeah, that's another thing.
Um, there's no signs about anything, about kids, hidden driveways.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Straight Gut.
Well, where I, when I pull out of my driveway, I roll down my window and I listen. And I'll pull out, and invariably, especially in the mornings when they're late to work, they'll be on my tail before I get halfway to my cousins, and they'll be telling me I'm number one and, you know, pass me on a double yellow line, but.
You know, it's unfortunate that this problem is, it's, it's everywhere, and, and I'm not downplaying it by no means, but it is lit, I live on Old Bethel, and they do that on Old Bethel.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm familiar with Old Bethel. But anyway, I appreciate, Mark talked, he answered my call, I talked to him today.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I just wanted to come make all of you aware of our situation, our concern.
I'm gonna talk to the sheriff and see what, who does studies like that, because I don't know.
Well, he, they can't do radar, but, but the state can, and I don't know who, who would ask the state to.
Well, there's, there's a traffic study that can be done too about
Yeah.
and that's a different organization, I think, but I will look into it, I promise, thank you.
I got one more quick thing.
Okay.
And I asked you about this at the Kiwanis meeting, and I, this may not be the place to do it. But I'm 76, and in Walker County, you're paying school taxes based on your adjusted net income. My understanding in Catoosa County, that it is not, I mean, you, when you get 75, you don't pay. Then I found out, nothing for sure, but it's a, a county thing, and you, I mentioned that to you before you were elected. And you, I mentioned that to you before you were elected, and I was just wondering if, you know, excuse me.
I thought we had a seventy-five age limit.
Well, you do. If, if, if you have an adjusted net income of fifteen thousand dollars or less.
Now that, if it, if it is the Board of Education, I mean, that's their-
I don't, I don't know. I just know it's a county thing, and I appreciate any help, because y'all are going to get old one day, too.
Are you talking about the-
Right on your heels, brother.
Are you talking about the school taxes, or are you talking about property taxes?
School, school.
School tax.
So unfortunately, this board doesn't have any authority over the Board of Education. That, and that is county, you're right.
So, so you need to talk, so I need to talk to the Board of Education?
Yeah, I'm afraid so.
Who would that be?
We have a board member here present tonight.
Hi Travis.
Travis?
Hi Travis.
Sir? I wouldn't throw you under the bus, Travis.
I'll be to see you, okay. Thank you for your time, I appreciate what you do.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Jack.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board tonight? Nope, nobody else? Oh, okay, sure. Remember to say your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Ned Yates. Uh, I'd like to extend my apologies sometimes for having a little harsh language to, to y'all, to the board. I'm a student of history. And consequently, sometimes my language and usage is a little archaic. Yeah, it's influenced by my knowledge of, of the principles of history and how they apply to current events. Recently, a group of Walker County citizens questioned the implementation of the hotel motel tax, which is, uh, the, under the, the, uh, the Department that, of, of Consumer Affairs, which is responsible for overseeing the implementation. They hear very few cases a year. Last week, they had a hearing that was attended by a contingent of Walker County employees, including our attorney, Mr. Gerard, and attorney representing Macklemore. Several complaints challenged the legality of the arguments. The Department of Community Affairs, DCA, instructed that the courts would be the only way to resolve these complaints. The ruling they said they were able to make was there was a lack of clear records and detailed invoices. They were unable to verify the payment to Macklemore's were actually used for tourism promotion and development. And they required, because of these poor records, and they demanded immediately that copies of detailed invoices, they said granular was the term they used, from Macklemore, be remitted to the chamber and to the county. And that they, so they could verify the proper legal expenditures were done according to the statutes. I think I just messed up. All right, the, uh, they were subject, and, and these would be subject, be submitted at the end of March. In other words, they, they were demanding that from the twenty-sixth of October until the thirty-first of March of next year, and they would be willing to, to have a further hearing to see if they were transparent in their opinion. In summary, uh, the DCA demanded clear in, information in reporting of such as copies of detailed invoices to the county, to the chamber, from Macklemore. They also recommended that the legality of the agreement to give the hotel motel fund would, would be settled, would be, have to be settled in court. This caused a, a great apparent consternation of our attorney, Ken Gerard, because he was physically distressed because of the, he seems to have more, it appears to me he had more concern for the amount of the tax-free dollars gift going to Macklemore than the Walker County's proper oversight for tourism, uh, promotion and development. I'm a little confused here, I don't know how to find it. In conclusion, a group of citizens should not have to file a complaint to compel their government to file, to perform their proper oversight. My hope is that the future, in the future, this board takes more seriously their duties of oversight responsibility.
Does anyone else want to address the board on any topic? All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'm sorry? Yes, I didn't see your hand or hear you, so come on up.
Sorry. So I got a couple little things for-
Tell us your name for the record.
Tina Gross. And I have a little nonprofit called Operation Outreach here in Walker County. We, um, serve and honor and feed veterans, homeless veterans, homeless folks, folks on the brink of homelessness. And so I got a couple things to talk about. And I don't have my brother Randy here to help me out tonight, but we have this thing going, um, for Christmas. It's called Wreaths Across Walker County. It's an amazing thing. We kind of stem from America down front to Chattanooga. And now, as of last year, or last year, we got it kind of at the last minute in November. So we weren't able, we, we hit the ground running, but we weren't able to, um, raise the money and do all we wanted to do. But we got out there and we started at, um, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong. It's called the Tennessee Georgia Cemetery. And, um, we got out there, we cleaned off all the graves of all the veterans, we marked them all, and, um, we raised the money, and we got out there and we put wreaths on the veterans' graves. Now, one of the most phenomenal things about these wreaths are they're fresh, and they are ten whole bucks apiece. So for a hundred bucks, you can put wreaths on ten veterans' graves. And it's a phenomenal thing. If you want more information, um, come talk to me, I can hook you up with that. Number two, on Saturday, um, right here in Lafayette, at the square, we have our annual Veterans Parade. It's going to be a whole lot different than it was last year. We're kind of going to do like the Macy's Parade thing. We're going to announce the folks that stop in front of us. It's going to be awesome and amazing. We have prizes for, um, veterans. And it's not too late to get involved. So lineup starts at eleven, goes to eleven forty-five. We're lining up at the old, um, Lafayette High School. Line up, get in, involved, um, run the parade, and we'll end up at the Joe Stock Memorial Park. And I don't know if y'all know a lot about Dot and Joe Stock, but they are old school, awesome, amazing, wonderful people from Lafayette, Georgia, and kind of like the Wardlaw family. Lafayette wouldn't be what it is on the map without the Joe Stock family. So I encourage you all, come out, be part of the parade. The parade's going to end at the Joe Stock Memorial Park. We're going to have vendors, we're going to have music. It's going to be sixty-seven and sunny. It's going to be a great day. So I encourage you all to come out. The last thing, um, the third thing I want to talk to you about, actually I have four, if I don't run out of time, is, um, on Monday, um, the tenth day of the month, this Monday, right around the corner, we have our annual Walker County Veterans Appreciation Banquet. All veterans come, all veterans eat for free. If you are a patriot, you want to come, it's just fifteen dollars a meal. Our awesome, amazing Robert Wardlaw from Lucky IQ is going to be feeding us. We're going to have amazing speaker, oh my gosh. I want to keep it a surprise, but if it's going to encourage anybody to come, let me just tell you, our one and only Lieutenant Colonel, I'm going to really slaughter what he is over the, help me, the judicial, anyway, Clayton Fuller. Our awesome, amazing DA from the Help Me With It, the Blankety Blankety-
Lookout Mountain-
Lookout Mountain Judicial System District Attorney, Lieutenant Colonel Clayton Fuller, who I wanted to speak prior, but he's been deployed out defending our nation while his wife was raising his two little children on her own. He is back in action, and he's going to talk to us about what it's meant to him to be out there, um, securing our constitution and what it means for him to come back and secure our judicial system. It's going to be great food, dessert.
What time is it, Tina?
Six o'clock PM, Monday night.
At the-
At the Walker County Civic Center on Highway twenty-seven. The, um, registration is over. If you haven't registered, it's okay. Come, whether you're a patriot, whether you're a veteran, come out. The, one of the most awesome, amazing things about Walker County and our community is our people, our entire Board of Commissioners, our sheriff, our District One House Representative, Mike Cameron, the people who lead us in our county community, they love and support our veterans. So I encourage you to please come out Monday night, six o'clock PM, Walker County Civic Center. The next thing I'm going to talk about, and I'm out of time.
Yep. If the board doesn't mind, we can-
You want to cut me off, you can.
No, go ahead.
Proceed.
I want to talk about, this banquet is brought to you by Operation Outreach. It is my baby, it's something I always dreamt of. Operation Outreach is a nonprofit that supports what I said. Veterans, veterans on the brink of homelessness, homeless people, people in our county and our community, Walker County, on the brink of homelessness. So I just want to tell you that right now I secured seventy-seven meals for Thanksgiving, whole turkeys, and the fixing for people in our county. Now, I heard the gentleman up here speaking about the Chattanooga Food Bank. And I'm not going to throw him under the bus, I'd like to get to know him, I'd like to merge with him, I'd like to meet with him. But I just want to tell you all that I do hair full-time, and I can hardly do it because I hit the ground every day providing food and much more for our people in Walker County. This is my grassroots. So I focus on my county and community, and when I've exhausted that, I'll venture out because I'd like to consider myself a Chattanooga Greater Area kind of girl. But we have to start with our own. We have to feed our own, we have to take care of our own. So I don't want to be a handout. Operation Outreach, we're not a handout. We do provide food, and we don't, there is no reason why anybody should go hungry, period. But if you just have a meal plan and you drop food, or you have a food pantry, which I have a mobile food pantry, and all you do is provide food, shame on you. You need to love on these people, you need to mentor them. We need to find out, do they have drug abuse, alcohol abuse, mental illness, what the problem is. We don't want to just give them a handout and leave them in the ditches and leave them in the woods.
So if you have to, if you could wrap it up, what would you like to say to everybody?
We want to help them make resumes. We all have a gift. If they can't work, we want to find them benefits. We want to help them. We can help them make resumes, we can help them get work, we can help them get housing. But the last thing in the world we want to do is just keep handing out food to people and leaving them in the same place that they've been year after year after year. We are Walker County, we are Walker Rock, she understand me? I believe my county in Georgia, I'll stand by it. We are the greatest county in Georgia. We have things, we have Paine Gillie, we have Bailey, hello Bailey? We have people in our county that no other county has. We have veterans on our board. They are soldiers, they are fighters. We don't want to leave people in our county and community go hungry and provide food. We're more than that. So-
Well said.
Not that I don't, I want to merge with the food bank, I totally get that. But we want to do much more than feed people.
You should come talk to me at my office, I would like to hear your strategy.
Come to the banquet, Monday night.
I'll be there, yeah.
I appreciate y'all's support in Operation Outreach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Anyone else like to speak to the board? Sure. Just tell us your name and-
Hello, my name is Tori Phillips, and I am a small business owner here in our county. I'm on the Cedar Grove Community Center Board. I also am on the Board of the Macklemore Preservation Society. And I did write a letter to the editor about the recent banking, um, change. And I am, just wanted to state my opinion, um, to the board. I want to thank you for your service. All of you have a hard job, and it's very difficult when you have to make a decision for a big community. But I want you to take time in the future and just kind of sit back and look at what you're doing. Um, when people abstain from voting, I think that you should stand up and say, I'm abstaining. Why am I abstaining? What's going on with my decision? Do we need more information? I appreciate it when people abstain, but I want to know why. Why are you doing that? Also, I would like to know why our board, when we fought hard to get rid of the sole commissioner, why we would ever, with all of you folks here, give up your authority or your vote on what, um, the commissioner can choose to do with the money in our county. I just think that that is not something that we should ever do. We should never give up your vote for anything. I just really want you to know that I really care about our county, and I care about what's going on. And I hope that you will decide to move the money back into our county. I have not seen any paperwork posted on the letters that you may have received from other banks. I just would like to make sure that we make a real conscious effort about future moving money out of our county. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else like to come up? Sure, because the last time I started to talk, that somebody else stood up, so.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. That's what it's for. All right, well then we will move on to the consent agenda portion of the meeting. There are four items in there, and the board was able to review these with their packet before tonight. So I will make the motion that all four items be approved, and then we can have discussion, if I can get a second, please.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Is there any discussion about any of the items? Nope, okay. All in favor of approving all four items under the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, men, gentlemen. New business, there are two items, and then we'll talk about the two properties, uh, vote for that. The first one is the Resolution R dash zero seven five dash two five, Ratification of County Road Maintenance Contribution Agreement with Walker County Stone LLC. Do I have a motion on the floor about this resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the county road maintenance group, contribution agreement dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five with Walker County Stone LLC and the chairman's execution of the same agreement.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion?
So I'd just like to say, um, as you all know, the, the permits have been issued by the state to Walker Stone for the new wa, rock quarry that will be going in. The county did not have say-so, the, the property was zoned. They applied for their permits, the, the permits, the EPD, the EPA, the state of Georgia gave them all their permits. They are in the process of trying to find civil contractors. In that case, I, as the county commissioner, said, we need to try to get what we can. They're not going, they're not asking for any tax breaks, they're not getting anything from Walker County. I went to the table, they, they proposed an agreement, I went back to the table, trying to negotiate, we did get more money. Was there a copy put out with the gen, I don't know, of the agreement? So, uh, there, there is a copy of the agreement that we finalized and, and come to an agreement on, on where they're going to give the county money. We will get, this is above and beyond any sales tax they pay. This just is an extra contribution that we can put into a fund that will help maintain the roads. We all know there's impacts to the roads with the trucking. So we, they want to be good neighbors, they want to work with the county. Uh, and so we just went to, to try to get as much as we could from them, and, and that will gradually grow as they open and grow their business. So this will go into a fund to, to help upkeep and maintain the roads above the money coming in from the T-S-Blossom, everything else that they'll pay on the sales tax.
Thank you.
So, just, just that we did do our due diligence to try to get the best we could. So, just, just that we did do our due diligence to try to get the best we could for the county.
Thank you for that explanation, is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor of this new agreement being ratified, all say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, then it is so passed, thank you. And the next one is a purchase order, twenty twenty-six dash zero 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 three oh three. There were two bids for the replacement of the HVA system in the Road Department and the Fleet Management Building. This system is, I think, over thirty years old, so it's way past time to be re- replaced, so we got two bids. And the lower of the bid was for Jake Marshall, it's two thousand dollars lower, and that is what we are suggesting that the board approve today. Is there a motion on the floor to approve or to deny?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion about these two quotes or the work that will be done?
The, the funding for this comes out of, is it a splosh project on building?
It's like, yes, it should be splosh, it should be in the uh.
It's the facilities, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought I just.
Sure, um okay, any other discussion? All, all in favor to hire Jake Marshall to do this work, say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, so moved, all right, now we're to the properties uh for Mr. Lloyd. This is uh Joseph Lloyd requests a setback variance for property located at nine five seven Durham Road in Rising Fawn, Georgia, three oh seven three eight, tax, map and parcel number zero dash zero zero four dash zero one four. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about this item? All right, all in favor to approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, Mr. Lloyd, you may move forward with your plan. The next one is uh Thomas Guthrie requests a variance to divide off less than five acres in a A-one zone for property located at three oh one seven West Cove Road in Chickamauga, Georgia, three oh seven oh seven. Tax, map and parcel number zero dash two four three dash zero three two. What is the pleasure of the board for this item?
Motion to approve with the conditions that the planning commission set forth.
Is there a second by the board?
Second.
All right, any discussion about the um, the conditions or anything about this item? Okay, then all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Guthrie, you may move forward with your plan. You're welcome. All right, we're moving on to Commissioner comments, Mr. Blake Moore?
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved, um thank you, Tina, for everything you're doing. Thank you to all the um employees of Walker County for all the hard work and dedication. Tire Amnesty Day um this weekend, you can take your tires to the city of Roswell, if that's closer for you, at uh two hundred Ellis Road and drop those off up there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Askew?
Just thank everybody for coming out, uh once again, thank all our employees, uh uh like to hear everybody's opinions and, and their thoughts, and help, uh help us make our decisions. Would like to say that there are always two sides to everything, and sometimes we need to look at them from different, different lenses to get the whole picture, so. Uh but I thank everybody and welcome, all the comments, welcome at every, every time, appreciate you.
Mr. Hart?
Happy Veterans Day, Tina, thank you for the work you've done with that, you mentioned some programs that were coming up. Uh also on Tuesday, the eleventh, Lafayette High School has their program at morning at eight thirty, and I think Risen High School does something too.
On the twelfth, I think. I believe it's the twelfth.
Okay, so, yeah, if you're a veteran, get out to those events, people work really hard for that, uh the American Legion Post three three nine in Lafayette, works with Tina closely, the commander right there is Chauncey Fowler, does a great job, does a lot for the community, so just take a minute to recognize those veterans, this, this uh coming holiday. I would like to recognize our partner in the city of Lafayette, they were recently recognized, the Award of the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, Outstanding Program of the Year. They did a field day this summer with the city of Calhoun, a, a, just a joint old-time field day where they had a tug-of-war and different things for the kids. And I'd just like to rec- uh commend uh Mayor Aron and Jason Shattuck and all his staff there that did that, they were recognized, I think, a couple weeks ago for that, so we got a great partner in the city of Lafayette, and thanks for what they do in our community. And Zaxby's opens next weekend in Lafayette, so if you can't find somewhere to eat in Lafayette, you're in trouble. Like a hundred restaurants from, from the square to Zaxby's.
Uh just thanks to all the veterans, it's Veterans Day coming up, again, thanks to Tina, I did attend her veterans dinner last year. On my birthday, yes, uh it, great event, if you can, help sponsor a table, donate something to Raffles, she does a raffle for all the veterans, so just appreciate all the veterans and people that serve this country, there's a lot of them working, not getting paid right now. So uh they're still working, and uh uh thanks to all our first responders that are out working tonight, and uh hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving and, and just remember those that don't get to take Thanksgiving off.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen, now, uh we do need to go into executive session to uh talk about real estate, personnel, legal or cybersecurity. So we will adjourn for temporary and we'll be back, thank you. We are back in session of the regular scheduled Board of Commissioner meeting. We have two items that we will be voting on. The first item is to convey to the city of Chickamauga to expand their recreation, a parcel that is located off of Wallaceville Road, known as the soccer field. Parcel number zero one four six dash zero eight zero A. Do I have a motion from the board to convey this property to the city of Chickamauga?
Motion to convey.
And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Blake Moore, thank you, any discussion about this item, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? So moved. The second item to be voted on is an odd-shaped piece of property shaped like an L. Sorry.
Point one, four acres.
I got it, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find my correct, yeah, point, zero point one four acres. Parcel zero one two four zero zero three A. The board, I'm asking the board to give me permission to sell this odd-shaped piece of property to one of the adjoining landowners. So may I?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. So I made the motion, so you seconded it?
Second to, to sell to one of the.
The adjoining landowners, okay, and is there any discussion about this? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, uh it is so moved. All right, that's it, we adjourned.